All right, good evening. Good evening. I'll call to order the August 1st, 2022 Davie County Commissioners Meeting to order. I'll ask Commissioner Renninger to leave us in the invocation.
Thank you. Pray with me, please. Dear God, as we come before you this evening, we're thankful for the many blessings of life. We're thankful we live in the United States and especially we live in Davie County. I'm thankful for all the staff that we have here this evening. As we begin a new chapter in the Davie County life, I want to ask a special blessing on our new leader, Mr. Burnett. We ask he has wisdom and guidance as he leads this county. As we go through the people's business this evening, we ask for wisdom and discernment in your name, amen.
May I have the Pledge of Allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I'll move to Ethics and Conflict Disclosure, Mr. Vogler.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 168-86 and Davie County Board of Commissioners' Code of Ethics adopted December the 2nd, 2019, I'd ask each of you, before you adopt the agenda, if there's any actual potential or perceived conflicts of interest with respect to any matter on the proposed agenda which would come before the board for a vote at this meeting today. If so, please speak up and let the board know at this time before the agenda is adopted.
Yes, sir, Mr. Vogler. I would have a conflict of interest voting on zoning map amendment, military service.
Okay, and that is pursuant to 160D-109, Conflicts of Interest of the Governing Board. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So we'll need to have a vote to recuse Mr. Blakely from voting on that matter.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor? Do we have any other conflicts of interest tonight? Seeing no one's, please speak up, I conclude there's no actual potential or perceived conflicts of interest by any board member on any other matter.
Thanks, sir. Next, we'll move to adopt the agenda. We have two changes. We would like to bring out the Dr. Slate presentation for her 100th birthday. Bring that up as well as for presentations, as well as Peyton Brown is going to give a presentation on their summer intern. Do I have a motion to make those changes?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, thank you. All right, with that being said, we'll have the Dr. Slate presentation.
We got to adopt the agenda as amended.
Excuse me. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda as amended?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor to adopt the amended agenda? Okay. All right. Next, we'll move to the Dr. Slate presentation. I'll call on Commissioner Wondexter.
As you know, Dr. Francis Slate, who's sitting over here in the audience, will be 100 years old on August 23rd. That's correct.
Right.
Got it right this time. He has served Davie County in many different capacities, and we'd like to honor him tonight for his service to the county and do a little presentation for him. We have a resolution here honoring the service of Dr. Francis Slate. It says, "Whereas Dr. Francis Slate relocated to Moxville from California in 1958, arriving on a snowy night with his wife and two children, staying at the Ark Motel and serving since 1960 as a physician and surgeon to thousands of Davie County citizens. And whereas Dr. Slate's love for Davie County and Moxville shows not only from his service as a physician, but also from his service as a public servant. He never lost an election and served three terms on the Davie County Board of County Commissioners, five terms on the Board of Commissioners for the town of Moxville, and 18 years as mayor of the town of Moxville. And whereas because of his service to Davie County, Dr. Slate was a recipient of the EC Tatum Humanitarian Award from the Davie County Chamber of Commerce. And whereas the Davie County Board of Commissioners desires to honor Dr. Slate during the month of August 2022, the 23rd of which will mark his 100th birthday, now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Davie County that August 23rd, 2022 be designated as Dr. Francis Slate Day in Davie County in recognition of the many contributions Dr. Slate has made to improve the lives of Davie County citizens. Be it further resolved that a copy of the resolution is to be spread in the minutes of the Davie County Board of Commissioners to commemorate this day and memorialize the outstanding service Dr. Slate has so tirelessly provided to Davie County. And that will be adopted this first day of August 2022. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to adopt this resolution."
I'll second that.
Motion is second. All in favor? All right, adopt it.
Thank you, Dr. Slate.
Everybody want to come down?
You can.
I thought Terry was going to say, I just wanted...
(laughing). Give Terry permission. Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Good. Hadn't had a chance to meet you yet, but I look forward to it. You know, Richard talked about Dr. Slate coming from California. His parents were missionaries in South Africa. He spent 32 years there. Two sons, both developed to be doctors, come to the United States. I think there's no higher calling in life than that is public service, which gives us a chance to make a difference in people's lives, to give us a chance to improve our communities in which we live. You know, South Africa gave us a lot of firsts. They gave us the first heart transplant in the world. He was a classmate of Dr. Christian Menard. They gave us the CAT scan machine, that's a first, but they also gave us Dr. Slate. On August the 23rd, he will achieve what most of us will never achieve. He will become 100 years old. I asked him, I said, "Dr. Slate, what's the secret to being 100 years old?" And he said, "Terry, it's real easy. You're going to pick your mom and dad."[536.29][536.29](Laughter). That was great advice, but it's a little backwards, isn't it? He was the economic engine of the local hospital for decades. Medically has done everything from delivering babies to brain surgery. Dr. Slate, I think you told me y'all delivered 13 or 17 babies one night.
I don't remember.
(Laughter) You told it to me one time. But anyway, he's made a huge impact on our community and our health and our well-being. When he was mayor and I used to take him through the industrial plants, a lot of people would come up to him all the time. The plant manager say, "Would you please get him out of here? I got to make production today and you've just shut my plant down." Everybody knew Dr. Slate. He had done surgery on their mother or somebody, but he's been quite a billboard for us. A couple of stories he told me in South Africa, he said, "Terry, do you know every morning how I knew how many patients I had every day?" I said, "I have no idea." He said, "The horses were tied up out front. All you did was just count how many horses were there." And then I said, "Dr. Slate, South Africa," I said, "Did you ever have to deal with witch doctors?" He said, "Oh, yeah. We went up to Zulu Land." And I said, "What was the magic?" He said, "I had to convince all the villagers and the witch doctor, they made the patient well." I knew right then he was going to be a great politician and a good board member. He also served as a county coroner, county commissioner, as Richard said, town board member, medical examiner, president of many civic clubs, trained other doctors, and mayor of the town of Moxville. He's a shining example of what we need more of us in this world. And again, here is a life well-lived, Dr. Slate. We wish you many more years and we want to celebrate with you. So here's to you. Happy birthday and cheers, my friend.
Thank you. (Applause).
What do you think about me? Yes. (laughing).
I appreciate the resolution, and it will be hanging on my wall in my house in an honored place so that I can see it whenever I walk up and down the hall. I appreciate the words of Terry. You don't always know whether you believe everything he says or not, especially about 17 babies in one night. I certainly don't remember that.[723.12][723.12](Laughter).
You showed us a picture.
Well, I've forgotten that. We came here in 1958, which makes it 64 years that we've been in Davie County. That's about two-thirds of my life has been right here, and it was a good place for us to come. It was a good place to raise a family. We have enjoyed our association with many of the people of Davie County. The trouble is that I keep getting older and some of them don't, and I'm missing a lot of my friends. When we came, I started my practice, and after some months, Senator Bill Brock, John Brock's father, asked me to become a county coroner. I had the election, won the election, and that was the start of my minor political career. I did run for county commissioner in 1968. And a couple of things that I do remember about that, John Bailey was the chairman, Brother Alexander was on the board, Sam Davault was on the board, and Jerry Swisket. Jerry Swisket and I are the two that are still alive. We made some dramatic moves on that board. The first thing was we appointed John Barber as county manager. We had not had a county manager before that, and so had a number of counties around us didn't have county managers. The other thing we did was we adopted a motion to establish an EMS, Davie County EMS. We never had an EMS before that. Another one, we developed a countywide water system, never been run before. And finally, we also adopted a countywide zoning system, which I think all of these things, county manager, zoning, EMS, and water supply, all of them have helped Davie County develop into what it is today. But now it's up to this board to carry on, and they are doing so. And I want to compliment this board for the good job they're doing. I'm glad you've got a new manager. You need one, and I hope that you proceed to keep Davie amongst the best in the state of North Carolina. So keep it up. Thank you.[956.51][956.51](Applause).
Next, we'll move to our other presentation. It's Peyton Brown, summer internship.
Commissioner, I just wanted to maybe introduce a little bit about Peyton. Her grandmother and Peyton appeared in my office a couple of months ago, three months ago, I think. Come on, you can stand up here. And she asked for an internship, which I thought was a bold request for a 15-year-old. I asked her why, and she said that she wanted to be the county attorney. That was the career path she had hoped to take, and I said, "Well, we'll give you some exposure to some different departments, and you can wait and decide later what you'd like to do after you've had a little exposure to other departments." So she's going to tell you about her experience with Davie County. I'll tell you, it's been a delight to have her. She's done great work, and I'm going to let her tell you about the work she's done. Peyton?
Like Mr. Ruffin said, I'm Peyton Brown, and I just finished my internship with the county. I spent the entire month of June and part of July visiting 13 different departments within the county. I have gained so much knowledge from working here in the past two months. I got to meet lots of faces and do lots of things that most 15-year-olds don't get to do. I got to tour the jail, the sheriff's apartment and the dragonfly house. I got to run calls with paramedics and was able to sit in the dispatch room in communications and hear some 911 calls come in. The list goes on. And I could stand here all night and tell you what an amazing time I had with everyone. All the staff was so friendly and helpful. They all seemed so excited that I was interested in learning about their jobs. And I did this not only to better my understanding and my knowledge of local government, but in hopes that other high schoolers would have the chance to experience this as well. So before my first day of work, I sat down with Paris Whitley and Wendy Horn to brainstorm some ideas about how we could get other kids to come in and learn, and we came up with a video diary idea. So I started taking some notes about what I had learned in each department, and I turned them into scripts. My mom patiently helped me record those videos, and we sent them to the two ladies so that they could edit them and get them ready. And I believe they will be shown at Davie High in the spring semester about how to get involved or how to become an intern. So my hope is that next year, next summer, you'll have four or five interns, and the number continues to grow as much as you allow it to. And so once again, thank you all so much for this incredible opportunity. It's benefited me in so many ways. It's pushed me out of my comfort zone by making me speak with the new people every few days and being flexible with the work schedule. And it has effectively improved my time management, social skills, and public speaking. And so coming into this, I thought, like Mr. Ruffin had said, I thought I knew what career path I wanted to take. But after getting an inside look at all these jobs and positions, I think it's safe to say that I'm very interested in some different avenues as well, and I'm grateful that I was able to see the behind-the-scenes work of what it takes to keep Davie a safe and amazing place to live. We aren't perfect, no one is, but my time here has helped me understand how you guys make decisions in the best interest of Davie County, not just your own. And so how hard you work to do everything within your power to keep us all safe is very important to us and to me, so I thank you for that. And so I look forward to seeing how my generation will become involved in government in the years to come. Thank you.[1213.77][1213.77](Applause).
Okay, thank you, Ms. Brown. We appreciate what you've done. All right, next, we'll move to public comment period. Mr. Vogler?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We've got one individual who signed up tonight for public comment. It's Dr. Darrell Nelson. I will be keeping time, Mr. Nelson. I believe, are you speaking on behalf of EMS?
Yes, sir.
So you'll have five minutes instead of the normal three.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Like Ms. Brown, I'm going to need some readers. Thank you, good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Darrell Nelson. I serve as medical director for Davie County EMS, started here in 2013. I serve as an emergency physician at Atrium Health, Wake Forest Baptist, and also an EMS physician. And I'm here tonight because I've just been concerned with some of the comments that have been made by EMS over the past few weeks. Comments that make me worry that the public may have somewhat waning confidence or worry about the quality of care that EMS may deliver. And I'm here tonight because I want to assure this board and the citizens of Davie County that it's just not true. There's been no negative impact with care over this past year. Yes, we've had some leadership changes this year, and that always creates a vacuum and causes some bumps in the road, but I think we're going to move through that nicely. Some of the things I wanted to highlight, when I started here in 2013, we had one cardiac arrest survivor in this county. Out of 34 cardiac arrests, only one survived. In the last eight to nine years, our system has pushed that to twice the national average for cardiac arrests. So if you have a cardiac arrest in Davie County, you are twice as likely to survive here as the average in the United States. This past year, the American Heart Association Mission Lifeline awarded Davie County EMS a Gold Plus Award for its STEMI care. STEMI is called ST elevation MI. It's a particular kind of heart attack that's best treated by going directly to the cath lab. Even as an emergency physician, beyond giving aspirin, there's not a lot I'm going to do to correct that. Those folks need to go directly to the cath lab. Our paramedics are able to walk into a kitchen, diagnose your STEMI, transmit that EKG to one of our STEMI centers, and completely bypass the emergency department, taking you upstairs to the cath lab where you'll get definitive care. We can do that far greater than 90% of the time, and that is exceptionally hard for a rural system to attain a Gold Plus Award because we don't have a cath center within the confines of our county borders. We have to transport every one of those outside the county. That award really starts with our telecommunications, too. They're able to recognize folks that are at risk of heart attack, and they instruct them to take an aspirin, what is one of the most life-saving things they can do. We also do that care very similar with stroke. We're able to bypass certain parameters of the emergency department, move that patient directly to a CT scanner, where it gives citizens of Davie County the best chance of recovery from an acute stroke. I'd also like to highlight that from a staffing perspective, in North Carolina, we are in a crisis when it comes to EMS staffing. Most systems are down an entire shift in some areas immediately around us. This past year, we've had one opening, and we've got several part-time folks that are one of them is going to take that opening. And that is remarkable when you look at some of our neighbors and across the state of North Carolina with just what an impact we have in staffing across the state. So in closing, I want to stand here arm-in-arm with our men and women with Davie County EMS. I'm part of that team as the medical director. I am responsible for supervising that care. So obviously, that reflects on me, and it reflects all of us as a team. And I want to say thank you to them for being there nights, weekends, and holidays when we're all celebrating or at home with our family. I want to thank them for going into dangerous situations, not always with the ability to defend themselves. I want to thank them for being there at 3:00 in the morning when it's 5 degrees and 1:00 in the afternoon when it's 95 and slow and snow, sleet, rain, and hell, we don't stop. We're better than the post office. They're there. They're dedicated to patient care. That's our primary mission, is patient care. We hold them to a high standard. They reach that standard. We train rigorously. We test to make sure they're capable and they're confident. And I would challenge Davie County citizens, if you see them out eating, buy them a meal, tell them thank you because they're not going home like we are. They're going to stay there the rest of that night because they work 24 hours. They are a valuable community asset and serve an important emergency safety net for this community, and we can't do without them. Thank you so much. I appreciate your time.[1500.22][1500.22](Applause).
Next, we'll move to public hearings. First one, we have zoning map amendment, 2022, 04, military service. I'll call Mr. Adam Barr.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Before you tonight is application to rezone approximately 6.77 acres from residential agriculture to highway business. The properties are located at 327 and 337 Hillcrest Drive, at the intersection of Hillcrest Drive and NC Highway 81 South, and the properties are further described as Davie County Tax Parcel F-869 and F-868. If you turn over to the zoning map that's in your package, you'll see pretty much the areas predominantly RA or residential agriculture. We do have to the southwest sizable property already zoned, HBCD. Turning over to the area, you'll also see a electrical substation to the southeast as well of note. The land development plan has pretty much the majority of this area as residential mixed use, and the Davie County Growth Enhancement Strategy Map has this as a secondary growth area. The Highway Business District was established principally for retail operations that are located on roadways throughout the county. As you know, we include many portions of the comprehensive plan that relate to the proposal. Some of note would be incentivized development near infrastructure to reduce growth demand on prime agricultural farmlands by allowing increased density, and to promote mixed-use development to encourage proximity of housing to employment and reduce work trip travel As you know, this is a general use rezoning, so the board may not consider any specific use of the property, but all possible uses within the Highway Business District. Board should also consider the following in its recommendation. The property's potential as a commercial use, the property's potential as a residential use, the property's location along a major arterial, whether the proposed reclassification is consistent with the purposes, goals, objectives, policies, and adopted plans for the area, whether the proposed reclassification is consistent with the overall character of existing development in the immediate vicinity of the subject property, and note that any new structure will have to go through project review in order to assure compliance with zoning ordinance standards. The planning board did see this at its June 28 meeting and voted for two to recommend approval. And tonight, you should consider the following actions of either approval, denial, or deferment, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Do they have any questions for Mr. Barr?
At the planning board, could you share the reason the vote was four to two?
You know, I don't think the planning board members at the time really elaborated too much on their specifics as to why they voted negatively. We did have a few neighboring property owners speak with some particular concerns usually relating to traffic and property values and some other similar such concerns. So I think the board members were sympathetic to those, but they didn't specifically elaborate. But that was kind of generally what was had during the discussion at the planning board meeting.
Thank you. Any other question?
I'm sure that there's a legitimate answer for this that I'm unaware of, but I just found it a little odd that more residents on Hillcrest Drive up that road were not notified with the mailings.
So typically...
From Mox Church to 801.
So typically, our practice has always been we do a buffer from the subject property using ArcGIS, so we create a 500-foot buffer distance off the property. That is even beyond what statute requires typically for mailing, so that usually, I mean, for, depending on the size and scale of the project, I mean, that can sometimes lead to hundreds of letters that go out. I think typically, we do include the mapping area in the package of what we do as well as even the amount of people. So I believe in this one, for instance, about 28 people were notified for this particular property. But that has been our practice so far. We also do signage on the property as well as ads in the paper as well.
Is there no indicated use of this property at all? Is there no indicated use of this property at all?
So again, kind of as general use rezonings, as staff, I try to encourage board members in not attempting to look at the specific uses, just because it is a general use rezoning. Really should be considering all the possible things that are within the highway business. I do believe the applicant is here to potentially speak on this a little bit further. They are Miller Tree Service, so I think they are looking at perhaps offices and as well as some other various uses. So I'll let them speak a little bit further to what they may have in mind.
Hold your call.
Okay. You want to wait?
Yeah, we'll go ahead.
Jake?
Chairs announced, this is the day and hour of the public hearing pursuant to Chapter 160D of the General Statutes of North Carolina, and also Chapter 155 of the Davie County Code of Ordinance of an Amendment to the Zoning and Ordinance Comprehensive Plan Regarding the Application to Rezone Approximately 6.77 Acres From Residential Agriculture to Highway Business at the Intersection of Hillcrest Drive and NC 801 South. There has been due notice given pursuant to the requirements of North Carolina General Statutes and Davie County Code and Ordinance by way of publication of notice in the local newspaper of the public hearing with general circulation in the county as required by law. Clerk to the board has attached the affidavit showing affidavit to this paper dated at least 10 days prior to today's date. I would ask all who wish to comment at this public hearing now to come forward to the podium, state your full name for the board, and then comment on the proposals. So anyone that wishes to come forward, if you would state your name so that it'll go into the record for the Madam Clerk of the year.
My name is Jake Miller. I am the president and owner of Miller Tree Service, along with my wife Allison, who is here tonight, and my office manager Josh, who is here. And what we are looking to do is to move our residential and commercial tree service to the property there on Hillcrest. Right now, we're down off Bailey Road, and we feel like it would provide an opportunity for our employees, who mostly, we have about 15 employees, most of them live in Davie County, and it would provide a central place for them to come and go to work. It would also provide our business with an opportunity to serve the members of Davie County more quickly. It's a very, you know, what we think in our mind is, you know, out of about a 10-mile radius, probably 80% of our business is right there in the county, so, or, or in Forsyth County. But it would provide a, a great opportunity for us to grow our business and, and just have a central home, an office, a real office, and not just a clubhouse that some people's had to go through and, and, I just, I don't know. I think it's just a great opportunity to, we want to park trucks and have an office. Any questions?
I do have one, if you don't mind. Is there a reason that you chose to go with a general zoning instead of going for a special use zoning, which would specify exactly what you're gonna use it for?
I didn't know that was an option.
Mr. Miller, the, in your application, it says that you build a parking lot, 70.75 acres. The site's almost seven or 6.77, so the other six is gonna be for future development?
You know, the way the land is shaped, it's, 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 it's a pretty steep grade. I don't know that any of it would actually, or the majority of it, would be suitable for that type of improvements. There's enough room there for, you know, a decent-sized parking lot to, you know, park, park the vehicles overnight. But there again, the way the topography is, especially right there off 801, we have a lot of road frontage, almost 1,000 feet on 801, and it is pretty, it must be a 20-foot embankment off 801 there. So there's just, you know, not a whole lot of room there to, for future development. But there again, I think it's enough there for what we have in, in, in mind. And there's already a structure there as far as an old, old farmhouse that we had intentions of remodeling, putting a couple offices in.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I don't have a question, but do you have a comment? My first comment, obviously, after what you just said, is you say you want to be there in order to grow, but yet you self-admit there's not very much room there to grow. So that's a little bit of a confusing statement, but-
So for probably 10 years, we ran our office out of a, I don't know, probably a 10-by-12 storage shed.
Right.
That was formerly a clubhouse for my kids, and I managed to bargain with them and, you know, get that out of their possessions. It was beautiful teal and purple. It was, it was great. But I think that's what I mean by growing into something.
And now, I am a huge supporter of small business, especially Davie County business, but I gotta tell you, I live in Advance, and in my opinion, that is the worst intersection possible you could pull those big trucks out of. I mean, that's low visibility either way on 801. It makes me very, very nervous, I'm gonna be honest with you, so.
Well, we have done, so we've done, we've, we've talked with the state, and they've gave us some ideas of where to put a driveway, and it would be coming out on Hillcrest, not on 801. And, you know, what I would say now is we're coming out off Fire Station Road, right across from, you know, Shady Grove. And, you know, we've, we've never had any accidents.
And being, coming out on Hillcrest, I guess, is another reason why I wish more residents on Hillcrest were notified, because if that's gonna be your, your road of travel, to me, a lot of the people that are, that you're gonna pass their homes, they didn't get a letter. So that, that was my point.
We've worked in the community for the past 20 years, and, you know, we like to say, if we haven't worked for you, we probably worked for your neighbor. So I, I feel like, you know, the people on that road, the majority of them would, would be okay with it. And like I said, you know, we are trying to get more of a central location so that we can better serve-
Right.
-those people, you know, in, in the event storms come and trees are laying on houses or in, in roads or on driveways. So, you know, the general process for us would be, you know, leaving out, you know, 7, 7:15 in the morning, and, you know, if you go through there at that particular time, there's, there's, there's not a whole lot of traffic, in my opinion. But, you know.
Okay. All right. Anybody else have any questions, for Jake?
No, I just, like, Nita, I have a comment. I see your trucks coming out of there a lot of mornings. In fact, I stopped some mornings and let them come out-
Thank you, thank you for that.
-off Fire Station Road, just because the traffic behind me is so heavy. I don't think you have, how many vehicles do you have that come out per day? There's not that much.
You know, there's two crews that run, so there could be seven or eight trucks at any given time?
I would say that's, that would have been pretty much my guess, because of the, the numbers that I see coming out, because I go through there most mornings about the time they're coming out.
Yeah. About 7:00 to 7:30, and then we usually roll back in, you know, around 3:45, 4 o'clock. So we try to, you know, we try to beat rush hours as best we can, if there is such a thing as rush hour in Advance.
Even during this weather, you've worked that late?
If you didn't like the heat, we should have studied harder in school, you know?
Anyway, I, my main concern is why was, was this man not given the option to have a special use attachment to the general zoning? As such, I've got a few questions that I, I think we probably ought to think about tabling this till we can get those answered. And I would make a motion that we do table this. Whoa, nope, we gotta, excuse me, gotta finish the public hearing. Go ahead.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions, for Jake? Thank you. All right, thank you.
Okay, I would ask any other individuals who wish to come forward, speak at this public hearing, to come forward, state your name for the board, and then comment.
My name's Tom Browder. I'm a lifelong resident of Davie County. We go back several generations here, just as Jake's family does, and we are on very, very friendly terms with the Millers and the Burtons. I don't like this situation because I don't like telling other people what they can or can't do with their land, because I don't want anybody to tell me what I can or can't do with my land. My wife and I own 60 acres that is almost right across the street from where his driveways will be, and we are not interested in seeing those trucks come and go every day. We think, just like Ms. Finney said, that that's a pretty dangerous intersection. It is all residential there now. Most of the people, in fact, the direct abutters would be my uncle, who is 80 years old, my grandmother was 100, and she just died a year ago. She was in that house before he was. There are a lot of old people, there are a lot of people that walk up and down that road, and I just don't think that it's the place for this kind of business, although I can think of worse things that could go there. And that is also something that concerns me, and I don't know if that goes to your general use comments or whatever, but, you know, what happens when a tree falls on Jake's head and his wife sells the business, and then what's gonna go in there? You know, if it's just general use, I don't know what all else could go in there. But we're opposed to it also because we don't think it's gonna be very friendly to our property values. In addition to the 60 acres that my wife and I own, her family owns about 200 acres that goes all the way from the west side of Highway 801, all the way down to the river underneath the trussel. It's the old Hartman Dairy Farm that has been in that family's name for many, many generations, and it's just not a place for that kind of a business. The one argument that can be made for this rezoning unfortunately also comes from my family. My grandfather, Walter Arle, had about 25 acres across Highway 801 rezoned probably 60 years ago. It has been a complete disaster as far as rezoning goes. I don't think there's anybody that has driven up and down through there in the past 30 years that thinks that the way that property has ended up has been a plus for our county. I feel like I can say that better than anybody else in this room, because we're talking about my own family, and it, that land is still in the, in the family name. So if you look at Highway 801, well, Hillcrest is completely residential, but if you look at Highway 801 on the east side, there is no business from the intersection up there where Walgreens is in Hillsdale, as far as I know, until you get down to the Advance Fire Department, if that's considered business, or even on across the railroad tracks. It's my understanding that the planning board for Davie County a few years ago did a strategic plan for the whole county, and that this area is planned to be residential agricultural. Even using the Tar Heel Banana Company rezoning across Highway 801, if you drive down through there, you will notice that about 80% of that 25-ish acres that was rezoned is actually still agricultural, and there are cows grazing in the pastures there, and only up on top of the hill where you really can't see much of anything, other than the neon green and brown building that has just been repainted. So we would love to have Jake as a neighbor. In fact, I was excited when I heard he had bought it, but we would like for him to be a neighbor in a house, and, and he and his wife can be our neighbors, and, and we can all get along. We're gonna get along either way, because I'm just not inclined to have ugly neighbors. But I really kind of wish that he would just keep this down on Bailey Road where his house is, instead of moving it up to where my house is. So, any questions I can answer for you? I had sent all of you an email a couple of days ago. I don't know if, if you all got that or not, but I had sent one.
Does anybody have any questions for Dr. Browder? All right, thank you.
Anyone else who would like, who wish to comment at this public hearing, if you would please come forward to the podium, state your full name for the board, and make Chair, so no one else come forward to the podium, I'd now turn the public hearing back over to you as board chair to close the public comment section of this public hearing, and then provide the board the opportunity to discuss among yourself what, if any, action you wish to take with regards to this matter this time.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Vogler. Does anyone have any discussion, further discussion, concerns?
I have a question about Dr. Browder's email. It said that you and Mr. Miller were working things out, is that, if those negotiations broke off?
Clearly not.
All right. With that said, I would make a motion to defer this, to further investigate some options here. I'm not, this opposition that I was aware of came up Friday and today, and I'd like some time personally to study this some more. So that's the reason I would make that recommendation, or make that motion.
Second. Okay. I got a motion in a sec.
Need a date to defer it to?
Next meeting.
So we're gonna defer it to-
Be September.
September?
Yeah.
Okay. I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? For you, all right, it is tabled.
Two.
It's actually deferred.
Excuse me, deferred, deferred till September.
Ask him any questions about this.
All right. All right, next we'll move on to our next public hearing. It'll be 2205 Delmar McDaniel.
Hello again, everyone. Before you tonight is application to rezone approximately two acres from residential 12 to highway business. These properties are located at 2519 and 2531 US Highway 601 South. Properties are further described as Davie County Tax Parcel L521 and L522. As you can see from the maps we have in our package, this is very adjacent to Greasy Corner, the intersection of 601 and 801. The intersection itself is predominantly zoned as highway business. These are the two R12 parcels there directly to the north. We also have some, a good mix of hodgepodge zoning there with R20 going along 601, some more R12 on the north side, some HB further down, and some GI to the, to the northeast. The land development plan has this area designated as commercial mixed use, whereas the Growth Enhancement Strategy Map has this area designated as rural. The proposed zoning is, again, highway business, and this was established principally for retail operations that are located on roadways throughout the county. The Davie County Comprehensive Plan states to incentivize development near infrastructure to reduce growth demands on prime agricultural farmlands by allowed increased density, as well as limit area commercial development to local convenience stores, farm stores, and generally accepted rural retailing establishments, and require them to be clustered near road intersections. The issues to consider, again, this is coming to you as a general use rezoning, so the board should look not at just a specific use of the property, but all possible uses within the Highway Business District. The board should also consider the property's potential as a commercial use, as a residential use, property's location along a major arterial, whether the proposed reclassification is consistent with the purposes, goals, objectives, and policies of adapted plans in the area, and whether the proposed reclassification is consistent with the overall character of existing development in the immediate vicinity of the subject property. The planning board did see this at their June 28 meeting and voted unanimously for approval for this, and before you tonight should be a motion for approval, denial, or deferment, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you have on this as well.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Barr?
Chairs announced, this is the day and hour of the public hearing pursuant to North Carolina General Statutes, Chapter 160D, and also Chapter 155 of the Davie County Code of Ordinance of an Amendment to the Zoning and Ordinance Comprehensive Plan Regarding the Application to Rezone Approximately Two Acres From Residential 12 to Highway Business Located at 2519 and 2531 of US Highway 601 South. There has been due notice given pursuant to the requirements of General Statutes and Davie County Code of Ordinance by way of due publication of notice of the public hearing in the newspaper, general circulation as required by law. The clerk to the board has attached the affidavit showing publication of said paper dated at least 10 days prior to today's date. I would ask all who wish to comment at this public hearing to come forward to the podium, state your name for the board, and then comment on the proposal. state your name for the board, and then comment on the proposal. Mr. Chair, seeing no one come forward to comment, I would now turn the public hearing back over to you as board chair to close the public comment section of this public hearing, provide the board the opportunity to discuss among yourselves what, if any, action you wish to take with regards to this matter at this time.
Okay. Thank you. Does anyone have any discussion or concerns?
I guess I would have a question. The applicant says that they're going to make a restaurant here, and I guess there's sewer, we have any issues with that. I guess that'd be up to cool on me, but I think it's a great idea, just asking the question. Mr. Barley, can you speak to that?
Yes, so I am actually unsure off the top of my head whether or not there are sewer capacity there. I don't know if Johnny is by chance in the room, and he is familiar, if there's any sewer connection out there, but regardless whether it was sewer or septic, they would have to go through any kind of approvals before any kind of structure is built there. Same with complying with any other kind of regulations, whether that's going to be zoning regulations or building environmental health will be greatly involved, especially if a restaurant does indeed go there, for instance. Do you know by chance?
Yeah.
Right at Greasy Corner.
Yeah, there's no sewer available there.
Okay.
Anyone like to, anyone like to make a motion to approve, deny, or table?
Mr. Chairman, I would make the motion to approve this.
Okay. I have a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Motion to approve in a second. Any other discussion? All in favor? Or, okay. Thank you. All right. Next, we'll move to the review of the text amendment 15501, definitions. Call Mr. Barr.
Yes, so this is a zoning text amendment brought to you for the section in definitions pertaining to agriculture. So the purpose of this text amendment is to allow for an expansion of the items sold on agricultural properties and businesses. As it stands, we'd be changing two potential definitions. That would be the definition we have in our ordinance to agribusiness as well as agriculture itself. This is a short one, so I'll kind of go into a little bit more detail here. So for agribusiness, "Any individual, partnership, corporation, or organization primarily supplying services or goods, such as equipment, feeds, supplies to producers, or marketable agricultural products, including greenhouses, nurseries, farm cooperatives, and the like, which are not otherwise specifically defined as agriculture by the NC General Statutes." The part that we would be adding to this definition is, "In addition, agribusiness shall include the sales of farm and seafood, seafood food products, and other agricultural products which are customarily sold at local farmers' markets located throughout the states of Virginia, North Carolina, and South Carolina, and at certified farm stands. For agriculture, land or structures primarily used for cultivating soils, producing crops, or raising livestock, the storage, processing, or sale of the products raised on the premises or as otherwise defined by the NC General Statutes. Structures customarily accessory to agricultural uses and located on the same parcel as agricultural uses shall be included in this definition." One thing I did neglect to add was, we would be striking after processing or sale of products raised on premises, we would be striking raised on the premises. We would be adding, "In addition, agriculture shall include the sale of farm and seafood products and other agricultural products which are customarily sold at local farmers' markets located throughout the states of Virginia, North Carolina, and South Carolina, and at certified farm stands." So that's pretty much the gist and the entirety of the text amendment, so I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have, and of course, we'd be looking for either approval, denial, or deferment on this.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Barr? Thank you.
Chair has announced this is the day and hour of the public hearing pursuant to Chapter 160D of the General Statutes of North Carolina, and also Chapter 155 of the Davie County Code of Ordinance of an Amendment to the Zoning Ordinance and Comprehensive Plan regarding the text of definitions found in Section 155.001 as set out in your agenda package. There's been due notice given pursuant to the requirements of North Carolina's General Statutes, and also the Davie County Code of Ordinance by way of due publication notice of the public hearing in the newspaper with general circulation circulated in Davie County as required by law. The clerk to the board has attached the affidavit showing publication in said paper at least 10 days prior to the day's date. I would ask all who wish to comment at this public hearing to come forward to the podium, state your full name for the board, and then comment on the proposal. Mr. Chair, seeing no one come forward to comment, I would now turn the public hearing back over to you as board chair to close the public comment section of this public hearing, provide the board the opportunity to discuss among yourselves what, if any, action you wish to take with regards to this matter at this time.
Okay. Thank you. Does anyone have any discussion regarding this?
I guess I do have a question for Mr. Barr. So I guess we expanded this just to be consistent with the agribusiness definition, pretty much.
No, I think a lot of this is, we've had kind of multiple request conversations with various requests, issues in, from a staff level of being able to interpret a lot of the definitions that we have for agriculture, and kind of relating that to some of the particular uses that a lot of farms are actually using and experiencing. So I think a lot of that kind of stems from that as a means of correcting it.
Members of the board, also Article 52 of the General Statutes, Agricultural Development, and Article 57 of Agricultural and Forestry Operations, and also, those two in particular come into play in this too, in all the General Statutes.
Does anyone else have any questions or discussion? Okay. Thank you. All right. Would anyone like to take action on this agenda item?
I make a motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman, before I second this motion, I would like to comment that this will be a great help for some of our farmers, and they need all the help they can get in every way that we can give it to them.
Yes.
And with that, I would second that motion.
Okay. I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Or, thank you. All right. Next, we'll move to consent agenda. Does anyone have any discussion or concerns regarding the consent agenda, or I'll ask for a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve.
Okay. I have a motion. I have a second.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor? Or, thank you. Let's move to old business. Do we have any old business before us?
Mr. Chair, I would tell the board that as of today, we have closed on the property at the corner of Howard Town and Canatsa Road, and we now own that property.
Thank you.
Okay. Any new business before us? Okay. Being none. County managers report.
I have no report. I'm just glad to finally be here, ready to get to work.
Great. Thank you. All right. Commissioners' comments? I'll start with Ms. Finney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll keep my comments short tonight, because we've gone a little bit lengthy in some of our discussions. I'm very excited to welcome Mr. Brian Barnett here as our new county manager. I look forward to everything that he's going to bring to the table, and how we can continue to grow as a board, and to take care of the citizens of this county, and I just thank you all for coming, and for everyone who come to welcome here today.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Vaughn Dixon?
Two would like to welcome Brian to Davie County and look forward to working with you, and think we can do great things together for the county. And I'd like to, again, say thank you to Dr. Francis Slate for all the work that he has done in this community, and the time that he's been here, the long time that he's been here. And I'd also like to thank county staff for all the hard work that they do in keeping the information to us, and thank all of you for coming out tonight.
Mr. Rediger?
I'd like to welcome Mr. Barnett. I'm looking forward to working with you, and got a lot going on, so hit the ground running here. I appreciate everyone coming out. Hope everyone continues to have a good summer. It's quickly drawn to a close, and, but, see you next month. Please come back.
One more thing, if you don't mind. I would like to personally thank Mike Ruffin for stepping in and helping us out in our time between managers. Thank you.
Well, I too welcome Mr. Barnett. Look forward to good things with you. I appreciate everybody coming out tonight and supporting us, and thanking us for the rain we recently got. So with that, I'll close Commissioner's comments, and we'll move to closed session. Closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143.318.11A, 3 and 63 to consult with an attorney employed or retained by the public body in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the public body, which privilege is hereby acknowledged to consider the qualifications competent, performance, character, fitness, conditions of appointment, or conditions of initial employment of an individual public officer, employee, or prospective public officer, employee, or to hear and investigate a complaint, charge, or grievance by or against an individual public officer, employee. Do I have a motion to go into closed session?
Motion.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor? Okay, we are on closed session. Thank you. Thank you.